We do have a quorum. Um, we're still waiting for Ryan Sapp, so I don't know if you want to wait a couple more minutes, Tony, before you call the meeting to order, or go ahead and get started?
Well, we'll go ahead and get started, Ryan.
We do have a quorum.
Okay. So then, the Planning Commission meeting of September 16th will now be called to order. First thing we'll do is read the determination letters.
No, you don't have to.
The Planning Commission chair.
You don't have to read it. Nope.
Oh, thank God. Okay, so then we'll take a roll call. Um, Gwyneth?
Here.
Donna?
Here.
Bruce? Rachel? Okay, Tony's here. And Ryan?
So do you have a quorum?
Four. We have one, two.
Rachel's getting in right now.
Rachel.
Yep, Rachel was in the waiting room. Bruce was on mute, but I, he's here.
Yeah, I'm here, sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
No problem. Thank you, folks. Okay, um, can I get somebody to make a motion to accept or approve the meeting minutes of August 9th?
So moved.
Thank you, do I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, okay, so then we'll take a vote. Rachel? Bruce?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Gwyneth?
Yes.
And Tony's a yes. Okay, thank you, everybody. And before we get to the agenda, Thomas, would you just like to give a recap of today's site visit? So we have it for the public record.
Sure. So we took the opportunity today and at the request of Nate Brockbank, who is the developer for Deer Springs. He had presented a project about a year and a half ago now. It's a future phase for the Deer Springs development. And he is resubmitting, re-submitting it for just concept review, kind of general Planning Commission input to see if it's worth moving forward with that, or should he redesign, reconfigure based on Planning Commission's input? And so I wanted to make sure the Planning Commission had an opportunity to see that. So again, it was Deer Springs, that's a subsequent phase, you could call it four, five, six, seven. We're not exactly sure what the phase number would be, but it's on the upper side, kind of the up slope side of Jordanell Parkway, where it connects to Deer Springs, kind of there on the west side of the Deer Springs project. So we went out there to look at that, it's about eight and a half acres. And the Planning Commission had an opportunity to look at it, ask questions about the site, kind of understand the site configuration constraints, power lines, et cetera, but also the accessibility from the lower part of Deer Springs, which would have a potential crossroad that would go from Deer Springs Phase 2A B across the road, perpendicularly across Jordanell Parkway up to this area. So we had an opportunity to look at that. We also took a few minutes to look at Creekside, which was probably brought to Planning Commission Town Council. I think Town Council may have done a site visit about a year ago. And that was brought in by Chris Ensine, who's also working on the claim project. And I wanted to make sure that the commissioners had an opportunity to see that, because they're thinking about kind of the opportunity to resubmit that for thought, concept review, possible annexation. That would be an annexation. And so we were able to see generally kind of the layout of those seven and a half, eight acres, and kind of got a feel for that. Chris Ensine was out there to kind of walk us through it pretty quickly. Both projects were reviewed pretty quickly at the site visit. But I've wanted to make sure the Planning Commission had the opportunity to do that, because come October, November, I'm not so sure where we will be weather-wise, and we may not be able to do it. So we took the advantage today to do both. That was about an hour between five and six.
Okay. Thank you, Thomas. Do any of the commission members have anything they want to add in regard to the site visit today?
No, I think Thomas did a good summary of it, and I think it was well worth the trip.
Yeah, it was very helpful to understand the layout. Appreciate that.
Okay, so I'm gonna take for granted that everybody's had a chance to review the staff concept plans a little that Thomas put together for us. And does anybody have anything they want to say about that?
I'm sorry, what are we talking about?
The staff review that Thomas put together in regard to the Deer Springs apartment building.
Do you guys want me, Mr. Chairman, do you want me to go ahead and give just another kind of quick overview with a little bit more detail on that project? And then if the commissioners have specific questions, having had the opportunity to visit, they can ask.
Thank you very much, Thomas.
So, the proposal had originally come in to the Planning Commission back in January of 2020. And so when we initially reviewed the project, there were concerns with regard to steep slopes, the amount of density that was being proposed. It's worth noting that the site is Zoned Mountain, Mountain Residential, which is one unit per one acre. And so the buy right is eight units of density on that site. The developer is asking for potential rezoning, and the opportunity to locate four apartment buildings on that site for a total of 128 units. Part of that development, maybe before I go any further, if I share my screen, I will make you all terribly dizzy, because I've only got one screen, and as I go back and forth between my maps, it might make you dizzy. I don't know, Kathleen, do you have the opportunity to maybe just show that, that site plan on the agenda packet? And if not, I can do it, it's just that I think I'll make you all dizzy, because I zoom in.
Let me try, give me a second here.
I've actually got it pulled up right now. Why don't I let Kathleen take notes, and I can do that?
Okay, if you don't mind just showing that, that site plan, that may make it easier to understand. And the commissioners, if they have questions or kind of orientation questions, I can get them there. But again, it's Zoned Mountain Residential, the developer wanted to, wants a new zone, an up zone, and 128 units. And so the proposal is that this could be four apartment units, approximately four stories tall, and they would be situated right there on that east-facing slope above Jordanell Parkway. And so I may make a couple of annotations here, just to help, except it's not allowing me. That's okay. But it would, you can see the Jordanell Parkway there, so you can kind of get an understanding of the layout. So the developer is also making an offer of a couple of small commercial pad sites, and they're right there when you drive across the Jordanell Parkway. They're right on the right and left side, they're kind of there in a small orange area. When we first looked at this again, the issue was, it's a significant amount of density, and so we wanted to have that discussion with you all. Are you comfortable with that? Do we need to look at maybe something in between? Are you not at all comfortable with it? And see how comfortable everybody is with the slopes. There is a significant area of steep slope that is associated with this site. When we initially discussed this with the developer, he then was able to bring in a slope map and note that most of the development could be built on the 30 and 40% slopes, which is still steep, but they're not 60s and 70s. Go ahead, Tom.
Interrupt, one moment. Rachel cannot get in, she said that she needs the host to give her access.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt.
No worries. And so I can turn that over to the Planning Commissioners. If you guys have any questions about it, you had the opportunity to go up to the, to the site and see it. But those were the primary concerns when it initially came in, just as outlined on that first page of my staff report. I can go through that in more detail if you want. The subsequent pages of that staff report are the staff report that was written back in January of 2020. So you can kind of get an idea from that staff report, some of the details, if you want, and/or if you want me to walk through that in detail, I certainly can. But basically, what the developer is asking for is the opportunity to get your input, see if you agree, disagree, direction in general. And I think Nate Brockbank is on, yep, I see him on there. Sean is also on, the person that we met with onsite. And I think Paul Watson, the engineer, is on, should you have engineering design detail, density slope questions. Is there anything I can answer for any of the commissioners? Right away? Or we can open it up to the applicant as well?
Um, it's, Thomas, this is Bruce. I see here on this sheet you've got up on, in front of us, it's 24 plex, if it's three stories, and 32, I guess, if it's four stories. On, on what Sean gave us today, it shows a 24 plex, so seems to be some discrepancy in whether they're asking for 96 or 128, or is that?
That was, maybe that was based on the discussions, Tom and Nate can certainly catch me up. I think when they initially came in, it was the 128, and so there was some discussion with regard to the heights, and maybe they took off a story, and now it is that 90, what is that, 98 units, I guess, right? At 24. 96, sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I, I forget, but I, you know, I was there when it came before us a year or so ago, and we talked about putting parking underneath. Is that one of the stories, parking?
I should leave that to Paul Watson to answer that, but there is some external parking that you can kind of see on the bottom right side. But I think in some of the buildings, if not all of them, it may have a first story of underground parking, or kind of at-grade parking, and then the building's built over. But you know what? I'm not definitive on that, I turn that to Nate, or Sean, or Paul.
Do you want me to go ahead and answer that, or do you want to keep asking questions? I can answer all those in a minute.
No, Nate, that would be great if you could jump in, that's helpful, thanks.
Okay. So yeah, when we first came to you guys, about a year, just over a year ago, we were looking at doing 100, you know, the four stories. Since then, we've decided to do three stories, and parking would be underneath the back portion of the, of the units. And so the front portion would look, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't look like parking of the building. It would be, you come around from the back, and you'd have units on three stories, but the back half of those buildings would all have parking. Um, the, you know, I was visiting with the mayor several, maybe several months ago, and he said, whatever happened there? We never had a boat, we never did anything, we just got really busy with other stuff we were doing. And he said, you ought to look at maybe doing that, because the, you know, now that Jordanell Parkway's in, the two pieces of commercial are great pieces of commercial. And so we started looking at this again, and we just decided to go with 96 units rather than 128. And then we have the two, two pieces of commercial. And those would be parked, you know, on this, on the, on the road, not on the road, but in the parking lot of the commercial properties. And you know, we, we received a lot of flack from Park City Summit County, that we don't, that Hideout doesn't have any commercial. And I'm, I'm in the process of deeding two pieces of commercial up on Highway 248. And then this would give another two pieces of commercial. So that would give, you know, the town basically four pieces of commercial in the, in the town. And one thing that Thomas said is, that right now Deer Springs is planning on doing 31 townhomes on this property, not, not eight, or whatever Thomas said. It's already approved for 31 townhomes. And we have, we, we think we have enough townhomes that we would love to do, you know, this, work, some workforce housing, some apartments. It goes perfect with, you know, that new Jordanell Parkway going in, and then the commercial is just a definite bonus for, for the area. So.
So with the 96, do you still have the four buildings?
It'd have four buildings, but three stories.
Okay.
And if you don't like the four buildings, we can just change that. We didn't want it to be a big mass building. You know, we could do one building of 96 units, but it would just, it would be, it'd be massive. And so we, we decided to go with the four, you know, four different buildings, a clubhouse, swimming pool. So there would actually be five buildings on the property, four would be apartments. The other building you see there would be a clubhouse with a pool, exercise room, et cetera.
And would that clubhouse maybe dedicated to use just for these apartments?
You know, I think that's probably what it has to be. In other, in other communities that I have, the bank won't, the bank doesn't like, liking to be open to the public, you know, the lender and insurance company. So I think it'll probably have to be used for just the apartments, but I could look into that if that's a real issue. But I know in other stuff I do, they just want it to be just used for the residents of that community.
How, how large are you going to have that clubhouse to be?
Oh, Paul would have to answer that, but I'm guessing maybe 2,500 square feet.
Okay, and when we walked that, it looked like a very steep slope right there at the end.
Yeah, I mean, this, it's not the easiest slope, but we're, we're definitely, it's definitely buildable. And I didn't, I didn't, I include a slope analysis, I think, Thomas, I sent you that slope analysis, if you want to pull it up. A lot of the site is 20 to 30%. And part of the reason we're doing the underground parking in the building is to accommodate some of the slopes, and not have to do as much retaining, because the, you know, the foundations would do the retaining. So that definitely helps. But it's, it's definitely a buildable site.
So how much parking would there be for commercial?
Say that again?
How much parking would be for commercial?
I didn't count it, but I bet we have five stalls per thousand, maybe a lot more than that. Paul, do you know that number?
Is the parking that's shown there?
Yeah.
Is that, is that what's going underground, or is that additional parking?
That's parking, well, I can't, let me look real fast. I'm sorry, I'm in Oklahoma, my daughter is playing the University of Oklahoma right now, and then tomorrow, or Sunday, they play University of Alabama, and so I kind of, I tried to get Paul to handle the meeting, and, and my, you know, Sean, who works for me today. But I apologize for not being totally attentive, trying to watch my daughter. I stepped out now, but I can't blow up, oh, there we go. So the parking you see, we, we have, we do have several outside parking stalls for the apartments, and then we have the outside parking for the commercial.
So if you put the parking underneath, that goes away?
No, 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 we, we still have the parking underneath.
Oh, okay, so that, yeah, that, so my, the answer to my question is, this is additional parking that's being shown?
Yeah, and I don't know what the number is, but I would imagine we probably have one parking stall underneath for each unit, and then one stall outside for each unit.
And, Planning Commission, this is Tim and Thomas. Just looking at, I think we want to make sure that the parking for commercial is included in this, because my first glance at this, and I apologize, I wasn't there earlier today, I was meeting with, with the mayor and Cameron on a separate issue, but my first glance at this, we just want to make sure that if it is commercial, that we have the appropriate parking for, for that. And, and just right here, from looking at it, I don't think we do.
So just looking at the first, the building would be, that has, I'm counting 30 parking stalls, and it's a 3,000 square foot building, that's 10 per, 10 per thousand, which is overparked.
But don't, but you're having residential on top of that, isn't that correct, Nate?
Oh, yeah, well, I'm saying that'll be, that would be assigned to those parking stalls. There would be 30, it looks like 30 for the first building, and then it looks like at least 20 for the next, for the next building, which is a little bit smaller building. We have one two-story building and one single-story building. So, I mean, yeah, we would make sure, and that's a great question, we'd make sure that it's, to separate those parking for commercial and for the residential.
We're kind of talking about these details. I'm not sure, do we want to be talking about details? Are we liking this or not? Because I kind of, I think this is a little bit much for that small area. And if the annexation goes through, I guess I'd rather see it over there than here.
I'll, I'll jump in, and this is Ryan Sapp. I, I mean, it seems, you know, zoned for eight units, eight acres, to go to whatever, 100. And then to get 1,000 square feet for the city, to me, doesn't seem like a reasonable trade-off for the excess density that we're giving. So I'm, I'm nowhere near ready to, on, on this proposal.
Well, let me ask, what do you mean by 1,000 square feet? Is 1,000 square feet of retail?
Yeah, like, and it would be helpful if we could see, well, this is retail going to bring the city, what is the trade-off?
Yeah, it's about, I think it's actually 5,000 feet of retail and, and office. So like the two-story building, I'd imagine that would be an office upstairs with retail on the bottom. And then the other building would be just strictly retail.
And how does the city make money off of that? Because it's in the Mida district, right? So we're not even getting the sales tax.
Well, the city would own those pieces.
Oh, so then we have to build it.
Or I could build it, it doesn't matter. I have no, I'm, I'm not afraid of building, I think it's going to go fabulous.
Yeah.
I, I'm also concerned about the, the power lines around there. There's like a transformer station, looks like very close to the, to one of the apartment buildings.
We, we may, yeah, I, I believe, Paul, I think it's 20 feet from the power line is the easement. And so we, we meet that, you know, that's, that's not, it's really not an issue. It's, it's all over, it's actually all over the town right now, with the, with townhomes, and single-family being that close to the transmission lines.
Yeah, but there are also transformers there too, three of them.
Give me up on.
So, and I was a little, little, it's not listed, like the power cord, cord is on there, and then the other power line that goes behind it. I just don't know if that was taken into consideration also. The, it's not on your map.
Yeah, Paul Watson would, could answer that, because he's the one that did the design. And, and trust me, I am not, like I said, I am not pushing this through. One of the major things was, the town does not have any commercial. This gives the town two more commercial pads, and you know, so I, I mean, I'm not, what, this does a couple of things for me. It gives me a different product. I would start this product immediately, where if I just keep it at the 31 townhomes, we're going to do it in phase, I think it's phase seven. So this just gets, it just, that's what it does for me.
Yeah, I, I'm just concerned also, the other thing I'm concerned about is the high density. Even though it's, we brought it down from 128 to 96, do we have, I mean, we don't have the commercial to support it now, and the two, I mean, you have the two pads, but, you know, it really, I'm a little worried about not having enough commercial for this density soon enough. I mean, the two pads are pretty small, Nate, I mean, I, I think they're kind of small.
Well, they are small, but it's for the area. You're not going to put a huge retail building up there. It's not a very, it's, I mean, Jordanell's getting busier as people build, but it's not like it's the best commercial in the, in the town either. It's, it's, it's on Jordanell Parkway, which is a good piece of commercial, but you're not going to go build an 11, 10,000 square foot building up there. I think the commercial is right for the area. You know, a coffee shop, you know, yoga-type places, a little office upstairs, a 1,500 square foot office upstairs. You know, those kind of things are what we were thinking.
So the apartments themselves, what kind of square footage are you talking about?
It would be one, two, and three bedrooms, anywhere from, you know, 700 square feet to 1,500 or 1,600 square feet units.
Nate, do you have a breakdown as to how many would be workforce housing, and how much would be general public, for lack of a better term?
Yeah, it would be what you guys are asking us to do. I was thinking about 10 or 15% would be workforce housing, the 80%, you know, AMI. So anywhere from 10 to 15 units roughly.
And these would be to rent?
Yeah, they're, they're, they'd be rental.
Nightly rentals are we talking about?
No.
Okay.
No. Yeah, long-term rental, month, you know, months, months at a time.
Month.
So, let, let me get this straight about the order of events here. If, if it's the townhomes, then it's, it's phase seven, which is who knows how far down the road? But if it's this, you want to do it sooner? Is that my interpretation correct?
Yes, we would, because it's a different product. Right now, you saw where we're developing, we're developing 77 or 78 more townhomes up, up there, getting up to this site, and so there's not a need to bring on 30 more. But there, there's a huge, oh, sorry, guys, the other team just scored. There's a huge need for this kind of housing up there, a huge need. And so, yeah, we would, I'm not sure what phase across the street, across Jordanell Parkway is, but I think it was phase seven. But if we were to do the, you know, the apartments, we would, we would start those immediately.
And the thing is, we already have apartments across the street.
I was just going to ask what, what size, or how, how many units there were in each of those blocks across the street? Just to, just for reference as far as size.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Does anybody know that?
Thomas?
I don't know.
Thomas, do you know that?
You're four stories, I know that. They're probably four stories.
Where did Thomas go?
Is he there?
I don't know.
Thomas had to jump off for just a second, his connection was really slow, so he's, I'm waiting for him to get back on.
Oh.
Also, Paul Watson, my engineer, cannot, he can't get unmuted.
Oh, it shows that he's, okay. Paul, if you can do star six, if you're on a phone, that should unmute you, you've got full control. I keep asking, I keep sending the message to him to unmute, and I don't know if he's on a telephone, or if he's actually on a computer.
How do you unmute? I'll tell him.
Usually it's star six.
Okay, hold on one second, let me text.
If he's on a telephone, okay.
So while we're waiting, I just brought up the website for the Deer Mountain Apartments, and I'm looking at them. They're three-bedroom, two-bath, is 1,135 square feet, and starts, it's around 1,400 a month.
A month, you said?
Yeah.
Does it say how many are there?
Yeah, how many apartments in like one building? Does it say that at all?
I don't know, I'm reading.
I'm sorry.
Does it say what the AMI is? That sounds like a, a pretty, like a lower AMI than 80%.
Yeah.
Yeah, just so you know, these, those, those properties are a tax credit property.
They're what?
They're a tax credit property, and so they receive tax credits from the federal government, or the state of Utah, actually. And that, we are not seeking that. And that, we, we are not seeking that. And so they, they probably are a little bit, um, they probably have some at 60% AMI, some, maybe even a couple at 40% AMI. But they receive tax credits for that.
You know, they're.
This is Paul, I think I'm online now on my phone.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I can answer your, your questions if you want to go back. There is 30% slope at both ends of the buildings, or sorry, both ends of the projects. The middle of it is mostly between 20 and 30%. As Nate said earlier, we're taking up a lot of the slope in our grading or in our, our garages. So you go up 10 feet automatically right there, then we'll have another 10-foot wall behind it. So most of the slope is on both of the ends, which we're kind of staying away from as much as possible. The buildings are 20 feet from the power line or from the easement. So they are close to the power line easement, but we are outside of it. And what other questions did you have for me?
Where is the transformer located? There's like three transformers located. As I'm looking at the map right now, upper right-hand corner. Right in there, there's a, there's a trans, there's three high electrical area. Not, not just the power line. It's probably right around where the P or ROS, it's upside down, printed on there. But right around there, I'm pretty sure.
I think that, um, the other power lines were outside of the, uh, project boundary. But very close to it.
Yeah, I don't think those are on our property. My totter report doesn't show that, that I, that I remember. So I don't think they're even on our property.
And, and I don't remember seeing it from any of the surveying information. So I will have to do some research on there, but I don't believe they're on our property either.
Yeah, it would be nice to have to be able to visualize where, where do the power, the power line in the back, you know, and behind the property. And then also, there's like a, an area on the upper right-hand side, uh, to the left of the power corridor. There is, uh, three transformers.
Okay, I, I would have to send the surveyors back out there to map it in. Because I'm, I'm not sure where that is in there. I don't think it's on us though. But it, but I'll have to send the surveyors out there to verify that.
May, maybe it's new since, uh, maybe it's new. I mean, it's not, I don't.
Yeah, they would have.
It's not on your property. I don't believe it's on the, on your property, but it's, it's right near the project boundary.
Okay. All right, I will stop by tomorrow and see if I can figure out where they're at.
And Paul, that last building, um, in the upper right there, that's kind of right on or next to the power corridor. It seems like in that area, that's where some of the steeper slopes start. Is that building below the, that steep slope? Is it still in the flatter area?
So, so that is the transition. Or that end of the building is the transition from 25 to 30% slope. So that starts getting steeper right to the other side of that building. But the majority of that building is in 25% slope.
Oh, we're not building on any 40% slope, right?
No, 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 no 40. It just only touches the 30.
So our buildings are under the 30%, 30% and under.
Except for our clubhouse, I gotta figure that out. The clubhouse is in 30% slope.
Yeah, that looks.
Yeah, that looks steep over there too, yeah.
And there's like even a retaining wall that was built on the parkway, right in that area also. So.
And I probably need to have that retaining wall mapped in as well, because a lot of the information they had was, as that, um, Jordanale Parkway wasn't being built. So I don't, we need to get some survey information on how it was finalized and finished up. Versus some of the information I have is prior to that Jordanale coming in.
And commissioners, I apologize, my computer crashed. I'm now back. So I didn't know if you had any questions for me, but I can certainly help out and you can help me understand what kind of direction you want me to kind of take back and work with Nate with regard to kind of leaving it where it is, um, maybe reducing the density. Working with, in the confines of what's being proposed, just kind of help me understand and we, we can work that through.
And it seems like you have a pretty large, uh, to the right, uh, go, if you go to the right on your screen. Oh, it doesn't show your screen, but right of the power corridor on my map here. It shows a pretty large area of open space. You know, I just, I, I don't know, it just is, that's just, if, if you were gonna do anything, I mean, that's gonna be kept open. I mean, cause would you put that, maybe think about putting a clubhouse there instead? Where it looks a little more flatter on the other side of the power corridor. I have to take a look at that again, but um, instead of over by, or instead of the clubhouse being crammed in on that steep area. I mean.
And, and I believe my slopes are too steep in that north end. I think, I believe I have a more slope up there as well.
Well, Thomas, my, my input would be is, um, I'm not against the project in general. Uh, I think there's still too much density here. I'd like to see maybe one less building. I'd like move it so that we don't have so much steepness down at the, the southern end. Um, I'd also like, I think we talked about Nate, um, when you first brought this forward. Someplace for, uh, a bus or some sort of transit stop. In this, since you've got an intersection both between the lower part of Deer Springs and then this, it would be a really great spot if, uh, you know, Mida or someone, one of the developers creates a, a bus line or one of the counties or towns creates a bus line or some sort of transit. I think it'd be, you, you need to have a turnaround and maybe some parking for that as well. But, uh, overall, I, I, I think it's not too bad, but I, I still think it's at 96, it's a lot of density up there. You know, maybe in one building, you could go an extra floor and, and get a couple more um, in one building and have one less building in total. Something to work about, think about and work through maybe with Thomas.
I can do that. And I can also bring in, uh, I'll work a little bit with Ryan and Nate and his team. We've worked together before, um, to make sure that Ryan has an understanding of this proposal. He's not been too terribly involved in this one, but I'll bring him into that, that discussion as well. Nate, is that something that we could potentially meet, start meeting with you and Paul and Sean?
Yeah, for sure.
Is what it is like, we, we, we're, we're ready when you are, okay?
Yeah, I'm back on Monday, so anytime next week works for me.
I'll, I'll shoot you all, um, sometimes and we'll try to get together and maybe do a little bit of like a, a design charade and get Ryan and everybody involved as well.
Okay.
Okay.
I appreciate everyone's comments and at least taking a look at this and.
One other comment about the.
Yes.
Looking at the road access. I'm just curious if it, you know, if it had a lot of commercial and you're talking about a lot of cars moving in and out of there. Would we put in a stop sign or how would you?
Oh, yeah, that'll be. That'll, yeah, there'll be a stop sign at the, at the west end of Deer, at this road and the east end. There'll be stop signs up both deer, both those access, or entrances. Now, we wouldn't, I mean, just make sure you understand, we wouldn't be putting a stop sign on Jordanale Parkway. We would be putting stop signs at the end of both of our roads, one coming to the west and one going to the east.
And, um, we, uh, that we would need to look at like what the site distances are, because that's right on a curve. Like, um, is, as far as the, um, the, like, if there's a bank at the road or something? What might need to be pulled back or? Just, just be aware of that.
Yeah, we could, we can look that, we looked at that when we designed this because we're putting the access, the exact same, well, it's been approved through Wausatch County. Um, when they did Jordanale Parkway, so. But yeah, we can get you those distances for sure. Um, but yeah, this access is already approved. And I think, I can't remember if the curb, they don't have curb cuts because they don't have curb and gutter up there, but they're both, and they wanted it right across from the deer. They told us basically where Deer Springs needed to be and that's where we designed it.
Okay.
And I can work through the site triangles with Ryan. I mean, our, our, it's kind of coming down, so we're actually taking out a lot of dirt on that front end. But that, yeah, I can work that out with Ryan.
Okay.
Question, um, you said that these, uh, renters, some of the rentals here would be workforce housing, one-month long-term rentals. Um, who would actually own the apartment?
So I would own the apartments.
So you would.
So when, when I say one month, it would be a minimum, you know, you try to get people into a six-month or a year lease. They, they get out of their lease and then you, they, they could go month to month. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be starting them out a month, month to month. Um, you know, we go long-term leases and then when they, if they don't want to renew, they, they go to month to month.
I'm just curious, do you own any other apartment problem?
Yeah, I own, um, I don't want to say several, but I have several communities in the, throughout the country. I have four communities in Salt Lake. Well, that's what we need to decide. Right now is, it was gonna be the town, but if you guys didn't want it to do that, we, we'd figure out a land lease or something like that, um, to, to generate money for the town. We could do it, we were, we were thinking either a partnership with the town, we build a building, we, we share the rents. You know, so it's just, that could all be worked out.
So Nate, I'll try to touch base with you and the team as early as next week. I think you're back, you said, right? And. One of the other thoughts we had is, you know, we want to kind of talk to you and get a good understanding with regard to putting density here versus in the potential annexation area. I know that's, you know, in, um, in, in, in a, in a bit of a delayed timeline right now as well. But we kind of want to make sure that we think about that because all of that'll matter. So what I can do is try to get you, me, Ryan, your team together and then see what we can come up with in terms of a creative solution. And then try to touch base again with the, uh, planning permission. Does that work?
Yeah, let us, let us, let us rework it and we just have to see if it works for, you know, to reduce the density for us. And if it doesn't, then we'll just do the townhomes because.
That's fair.
I have, I have partners on this and I have to say, okay, we're not gonna get the 31 townhomes. But we're gonna get this and then they'll run the numbers and say, well, you know, whatever. So, but we can, if you guys don't want to see 96, then we'll, we'll work it and see what works. And if it doesn't work, then we'll just do the 31 townhomes.
That's, that's fair. We'll work with you on that.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's great.
Okay.
So I, once again, I really appreciate you guys taking the time and going to the site and, uh, and, and meeting with me about this again. And, uh, you know, we'll take everything you guys said, as you know, I mean, I love working with you guys. And I take everything you guys say literally to heart. And so we try to make every change you guys want in all my, in all my developments. So we'll get with Thomas and Ryan and, and work them and see if it works.
Well, good luck to your daughter.
Yeah, good luck to your daughter in soccer tournament.
Okay. Hey, thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Sean. Thanks, Nate.
Bye, guys.
Tony?
Next, Mr. Chairman.
Kathleen, can you see if he is unmuted? Maybe he somehow muted himself and then can't unmute or something?
Yep, Tony, you're gonna have to unmute on your phone, star six.
Bruce, are you second in, in charge?
Uh, not that I know of.
I was gonna say.
Tony, if you could try star six again. Oh, I'm saying it didn't work. Try it one more time.
We, we've been, um, so far really haven't had too many technical problems, I have to say. But when can we start meeting in person again?
It's a good question.
Not sure.
I think what I've heard from the mayor is just in part because our room is so small. And now with the Delta variance, it's maybe a little ways off. Like it's still month by month.
Uh, while we're waiting for Tony, should we open it up?
For public comment?
For public comment? Is there anybody who wanted to comment on on this, uh, potential development? I don't know, Polly, do we have to do that at this meeting? Was this a notice?
Yep. So why don't you, if, if, uh, the rest of the commission wants to vote, um, for, to make Bruce the, um, chair pro tem while Tony is indisposed. Um, why don't you move forward? Why don't you all just say aye if you agree with that? And then, um, you can open up the public hearing for, to discuss the zoning map.
I move that we make, um, Bruce. Oh, he's on. There he is, just in time.
Saved by the chairman.
We just almost overthrew you.
Yeah.
Listen, feel free, anytime. Um, before we get to the official zoning map, we're gonna do the ratification of the claim phases one and two subdivisions first. Um, only because that's pretty much is just rubber stamping what's already been done and this is more procedural than anything else. We will open it up for public comment after we discuss it, but we'll do that first to get that out of the way. Okay. Polly, do you wanna, uh, maybe give a little bit of a summary of why we're reviewing this? Something that's already been basically approved?
Yeah, so the phase one was already approved and phase two is in for signatures right now. And as explained in the staff report, um, the, although the original, um, you know, plat was, or really the, well, it was approved, um, on December 14th as a final plat approval. But there was no plat that was approved. Normally you would have what you see in your packet of those. But there was no plat that was approved. Normally, you would have what you see in your packet of those final plats with all the details that can be signed. And so because that didn't happen, we wanted to make sure it went through a public process and that we allowed the public to speak to this. In case there are any issues that we can be aware of and just so that we can kind of officially ratify it. So we would ask that you just look at it um and consider forwarding a positive recommendation to the council. And I don't know if uh Thomas, you wanted to comment on any of the more, you know, planning side of it.
Um, I don't think that there's a lot to comment on unless you um unless you guys have some questions. Um, just that again, this is for phase one, which is essentially built and phase two, which is proposed to be built. So these are the first two phases. Of probably four or five phases for the entire claim project. The subsequent phases, three, four, and potentially five will come back to you for final subdivision approval, and so we'll we'll be working with you. On those at that time. But again, this is ratification for one and two to make sure that this went through the right. Public process. And so I think that's really it. I think that Chris Ensign may have called in. And if you have any specific questions, he's certainly here to answer those questions.
I just have one quick question. Are the subsequent three to five um above or behind the one and two?
They are. They're a little bit above, but you know, actually, they're a little bit toward the south of what you see now. And in fact, yeah, we can. If you go to the last large plan, that's just, yeah, you'll see.
Right there.
Actually.
Is that does is that road continue up to the next?
It'll it'll go up a little bit. Is that is Kathleen running that or Alicia? There might be one more map. Is there? I thought that we had. Oh, we didn't have the whole map in there. Um, but it does go a little bit to the south. If Chris is on, um, Chris, raise your hand or um. Uh, what is it? Star six to unmute if you're on a phone. I I forget which.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, wonderful. Uh, and pardon, ask the question one more time. I was just trying to make sure I could uh get on there.
Ask the question again?
Please, yes.
Yeah, just just where where are the subsequent um phases?
Okay. Oh, perfect. Yes, uh, yeah, you are seeing kind of a smaller view of it here. There's. There's two additional phases of uphill. I'll just say it because I, you know, it's we're kind of on a sideways road here, but uphill, we do have two more phases. And then we have some units down closer to two forty eight as well. Does that make sense?
Are the uphill units now being excavated? Is that the excavation that's um going on?
Correct. Correct. Yep.
Where can you can whoever has control of the screen uh go? I just had a question. Two up. Yeah, keep going back. Keep going back that this picture here. Where is two forty eight in relationship to this picture? Just so I'm clear on what we're talking about. This says phase one. Am I phase one?
Just so.
Two forty eight.
What I see on.
All the way to the the bottom left side. You'd go. Toward that area where the where the cursor is. Correct me if I'm wrong, Chris.
Okay.
And if it helps.
I think that's a good way of saying that the dash line.
I could show you. I can show you a larger layout for the claim project.
So this is just this is phase one. Basically, what's already built is what's being shown here. Oh, I see what you're saying.
Correct. We're building through that now, what you're seeing, right? And and my my YouTube is a little delayed from our phone call, so I think I'm on the right page, but. We're partially through what I'm seeing right now on the page. We're we're seeking to plat the next phase over and then we would work up the mountain from there. It is kind of the path of development at this point.
Okay, and phase two is where where does it connect connects to the right? If I'm not if I'm not mistaken, to the right of this phase one that's pictured?
Correct.
To the right, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, like I said, you're excavating it now. Okay. All right, just so I'm clear.
Correct. And just as a little side note update, uh, I I wanted to see if we could all take a moment of silence to enjoy the paint. Uh XL and D cell lanes that got approved by UDOT is a mini miracle in my world. So uh every time I drive on them, one, I feel safer and two, I can't believe that two years in, the paint lines are officially on the road. So little victory for the claim project and thank you for everyone's help on that along the way.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. So we are excited to finally have momentum and motion, and we do have people living in there currently. We have um uh landscaping that will be going in very soon, and we are just excited to finally have a a live project over here. So yes, we will. We're currently we're seeking the phase two. Uh, we will back be back in very shortly with phase three. So uh we're we're we're. We're grateful that we're in that position now.
I move that we um accept phase two of the claim project.
And it's phase one and phase two.
Okay, phase one and phase two.
Polly, I simply.
Just clarify, are we?
To allow those.
Yeah, actually, we want to open a public hearing, please. Sorry, just trying to move things forward.
Okay, we're going to open up uh for public discussion. Any comments that the public might have in regard to the claim project that we've just discussed? Please be advised that your comments uh will be limited to three minutes apiece. Okay, thank you. Thomas, if there's anybody got their hand up?
I see a hand up for Jared Fields. On the on the Zoom, not a phone call. It's a on the Zoom.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Uh, I will try to be brief and I don't think that this comment necessarily prevents the approval of of uh. Uh, this subdivision plat. Um, I I only wanted to raise it and I represent Mountain Resort Land Company, which is. The owner of the property. It's sort of a semi triangular piece of property between Claim and Soaring Hawk. Um, and in the fall site plan for Claim, that's in their master development agreement. There's kind of a a a road that connects into the middle of the curved road that's on the phase two map. I don't know if you can scroll down to their their phase two. Map. That it's well, that's sort of split. This map got split into layers, but so so on the map of just the road, this this kind of elbow. Uh, in the road that's on that phase two map. In the full site plan, it shows a road kind of connecting to the middle of that that would circle around to, I think, what is a a fire access. Um, and would also a a but uh the Mountain Resort Land Company property, which is that square that you can kind of see. On the right side, the lower right side of the screen there. Um. So I, you know, I don't necessarily think that the I I I assume that that would be depicted in a subsequent phase. Uh, because the actual uh, I think, building would appear in a subsequent phase. And this is this is also something we can talk to Chris and his team about. But I just think it's worth noting that the the subdivision plaque here doesn't show. Uh, that interconnection of of a road that will hook up hook off to a fire access that's in the full site plan. I don't know if I'm allowed to. To show my screen, but I do. I can show you an image of what I'm talking about if that's possible.
Jared, are you wanting to show maybe the 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 full site plan? I mean, I could share that too, if that if that's helpful, if that's what you're thinking.
If you have it, yeah, I mean, I I assuming we're looking at the the same kind of thing, that'd be great.
Yep, give me one second. Is this what? Can you all see that?
I can see it well enough and so.
So this is roughly kind of the phase one area right here. Two is up in this area, if you can see my hand. And then I think also in this area is two, I should say.
Right, so where you just.
Phase one and two. You're talking about this piece right here.
That's exactly it. Yep. So that doesn't show on the map, their phase two map. Um. And and so I just wanted to bring that up. I I do think it could be addressed in another phase, but the but the concern here in part, and it may not be in that location. Uh, but because the town has corridor access agreements with with UDOT, where we only have so many places you can interconnect onto the highway. If you don't have access uh through there, then that parcel or the Mountain Resort Land parcel to the right kind of becomes landlocked. Um, we're dependent on on the town and UDOT in order to be able to access the highway. Um, so that's the reason I bring it up as far as my own perspective, but I also uh, you know, again, I think it can it can likely be addressed. And and don't mean to to kind of get in anybody's way, but uh.
Sir, you have fifteen seconds left.
That's that's fine. I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, did you want to speak to that real quickly? I I presume this is the subsequent phase.
Correct, it is the subsequent phase. There is that phase along the bottom road that 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 uh road would be more included in more detail. We're looking at a plat and that and this particular phase or plat phase two does not include that.
Okay.
So probably a little early.
Yeah, and you already have an agreement with Mountain Resort Land Company to do that to connect it, or how does that work? I mean, seems like.
We don't. I mean, I'm happy to talk to him about that. Um, but yeah, we did. There's no obligation. There's I I I'm happy to look at it with him. But that's just not uh currently planned, so but we can look at it.
Yeah, understood. I mean. They they want stuff from us. They won't even answer our call, but whatever. It's unbelievable.
Did Tim Dixon have his hand up?
Yes.
So, Thomas, just to make sure, I mean, in regards to UDOT and their access on two forty eight. Um, has this been brought to their attention for that second access that we want to get for claim on the phase two?
This wouldn't be for phase two. It'd be a subsequent phase, but Chris, I'll let you speak to that if you broached that with UDOT at this point.
Yeah, happy to. Um, and I'm sorry, it's a little. Do you mind just repeating the question one time?
Yeah, no worries. And and no worries in this. And again, I apologize just being hired at the in the town within the last month. I'm. I'm trying to catch up exactly with uh with most of our planning stuff. So it is, have you talked to the UDOT about the second access at all? And what's their general feeling on it? Because I wouldn't want us to go down and get this in a planning commission approval. And then get to a town council and its contingent on uh a UDOT approval and then they, you know, because I we're all we've all worked with UDOT for for many years. And you know, just as well as I do, they could deny this just on a whim, it it seems. So um, how far along are you in that? How far along are you in that? And how confident are you in that that you think you can get that one? Because it it is kind of close to their second to that first entrance. And I think that would might be their first uh issue that they would have a problem with giving the speeds on two forty eight.
So it is it Tim?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so Tim, so that was all a part of our approval that we've uh. I I feel like I work at UDOT for how much I've been involved out there and how well I understand their system now and how it so if. Part of the two year thing in and I know the mayor would probably express the same thing. So there's the corridor agreement. There's. Uh, what was existing, what there is now. We went from some minor to some major intersections. All of that was contemplated, especially the uh that 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 is a uh fire access, not a public access. You you mentioned proximity to the main intersection there. This is not for everyday vehicular traffic. Uh, they are okay with it. They have approved that. We are. We have fully, they have seen the site, they have approved this site, they have given access, they have granted all all. I don't think I have into any more interactions with UDOT.
Okay, so so from UDOT's perspective, this is an emergency access only that.
Only, correct.
With, yeah, that could be.
Gated at the top.
Crash gate, yeah.
Correct. Yep, yep. So correct. Full fire access only.
Got you. Okay, I appreciate that.
You bet.
Are there any other public comments in regard to the claim phases one and two?
Remember, it's star six on your phone to unmute or raise your hand here, and I don't see any hands raised.
Okay. In that case, we'll close public discussion in regard to the claim subdivision and would anybody like to make a motion in regards to it?
And to suggest your motion, if you support it, would be to forward a positive recommendation to the town council to ratify. Claim plats one and two subdivision and plat amendments.
I guess I was on mute, um, but so moved.
That's that's a mouthful. Thank you, Polly.
Okay, then we'll take a vote.
I'll say.
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Tony say yes. Okay, therefore, we will give a positive recommendation to the town council in regard to. The ratification of claim phases one and two subdivisions and plat amendments. The next and last on the agenda is the continued discussion of the official zoning map of the town of Hydeout. And potential recommendation to the town council.
Great. I will. I'll go ahead and share my screen. I I had some issues earlier with my computer for some reason, kind of. Bugging out a little bit with Zoom, but let me try this. If I have an issue, I'll give it back to Alicia, but let's try this. Okay, so if you remember, we had discussed a draft zoning uh map at the last planning commission meeting. And so what we had uh hoped for at that time was some public input, some dialogue and some uh. Additional uh subsequent input post that meeting. I think we actually got all of that, which was quite good. And so what we did. If you remember on that initial map, the recommendation was to get to a zoning map that was in compliance with what or I should say in conformance with the uh. Zoning that was on the ground. That was with that which was proposed pursuant to the MDAs um in the community. And respecting the density pods that are part of the master MDA. As we've gone through this in a little bit more detail. We've begun to simplify this. Let me just go to the map because I think that'll be a little bit easier. Um, what we've done is simplify this a little bit and remove the density pods from the zoning map because they're not um. They're not official zoning districts per se. Their density pods pursuant to the MDA they carry with them, similar zoning characteristics, but the underlying zoning. For the MDA is the R SPA, the Resort Specially Planned Area. So the area that you see in beige is the R SPA area, again, Resort Specially Planned Area. And that is the underlying zoning, the base, the base zoning for the MDA. On top of that sits some density pods that are outlined in the MDA. And we have a map for those as well. So you can start to see, of course, um. Uh, Golden Eagle, Soaring Hawk, um shoreline in this area, and these reflect what are included in the MDA. But these aren't being recommended as part of the zoning map. We're proposing just the base zoning. That is the R SPA zoning. So you can see we've simplified this map significantly. So what we'd be asking you all to vote on is this map tonight. The density pod map that I just showed you is really just an in-house working document, so we have an understanding of how our zoning map relates to the density pod areas within the MDA. So as we worked through this, we have tried to incorporate, if you remember, if you could see my cursor, we've incorporated a little bit of neighborhood commercial up in this area. Um, we've reflected the hashed lines down here at the bottom. You could see here in Deer Springs. You could see down here in Deer Waters and Claim right here. Those are the planned performance development areas. Those are agreements um with the town council uh where uh MDAs have been a part of that for the most part, but that allows for. MDA's have been a part of that for the most part, but that allows for re uh configuring density um in those areas. And so all of that's outlined on this map so that we can see where MDA's and plant performance developments have been uh developed within the community. You could see this dotted line, of course, outlines the the master MDA right here. It's worth backtracking just a little bit so that you can see kind of where this started. This is the zoning map from the uh two thousand nine general plan. You can start to see, again, this was pretty much outlined as our spa. You could see there was a protected area down here for the recreation lands, and this area was a little bit more ambiguous, kind of thought of as open space. Since then, with annexations, we've gone further north up here. This is um Todd Hollow or Deer Mountain Affordable Housing. Now, we have annexed this area and Deer Springs is in, so some of this has changed along the way. But it's worth, so it's worth you understanding that this area has almost always been designated our spa. If I go into the twenty sixteen zoning map, it clarified things a little bit. It built off of the two thousand nine map that you just saw. We still had it in twenty sixteen um annexed up here or seen Deer Springs or anything come in. But you can start to see some of the Deer Waters Lakeview is um starting to get a little bit more formalized with uh sorry about that, with some mountain zoning, et cetera. In twenty nineteen, I can't rotate this unfortunately, so we kind of have to look at it like this. In twenty nineteen, the general plan included um this zoning map or recommended land use map. We're not exactly sure where this map came from and where those lines came from. They don't really follow particularly in this area over here on the east side of the community. They don't really follow with the MDA or the um uh existing zoning, and it doesn't reflect the um R SPA under all of it as is appropriate pursuant to the MDA and ARP document. And so that is why we're wanting to get to clarity and adopt one official zoning map that is this one. For to just add one more thing, and then please ask any questions. This area here, I think on the initial draft map that was presented to you all last month, I think this was noted as mountain, but we revised that because this is the Bureau of Reclamation Lands, the Recreation Lands. These are areas that wouldn't be developed, so we're recommending that that be zoned open space. And again, that's pursuant to our two thousand nine vested code, so that is in line with the zoning districts that we had available to us. Sorry, go ahead.
Sorry to step on you there. Um, I was just going to comment two things. One is that although the earlier maps, two thousand nine and two thousand sixteen say zoning map, we never, part of why we're doing this and calling it a ratification is that we were never able to find an ordinance which adopted a zoning map. The general plan, the two thousand nine map was part of a general plan. There was an ordinance associated with the general plan. But there was never a process where they, that we saw that showed it to be adopted as an official zoning map. And then that two thousand sixteen map, I found it was used at a city uh town council meeting in two thousand sixteen. But I never saw any evidence that the town had adopted it as an official zoning map. So um and then the same thing for the two thousand nineteen, that was just part of the general plan. There was no ordinance associated with it. So because of all those, we thought it was really important to make sure that we had an official zoning map for the town. And um, we think that what we're presenting is a good depiction of zoning as everybody understands it and follows kind of um how it's um what has been approved and what has been, you know, through developments and outside of the R SPA and reflects the MDA area as R SPA. Um, and then just to briefly note, we did include a density pod map. Uh, as Thomas pointed out, it's not an official map. It's more for our record keeping. Um, and um, you know, the R SPA areas are, you know, subject to the vested code and the density pods, you know, are aren't zoning per se under the vested code. It, you know, the vested code talks about that um that those portions should be submitted to hideout for comment and approval, but that they are likely to change and influenced by market forces. So that, so because of that, we wanted to put something so we could see what was on the ground, and that's a work in progress. We're uh wanting to work with anyone who has, you know, wants to contribute to make that map as accurate as possible. But again, that's not going to be voted on. It's just more of something for for us to use. But so what you are voting on or looking at tonight is the official zoning map.
I have a question. Um, i- is there a reason why the golf course is not i- in a different color on either of these maps?
So the golf course is, it does also fall within the MDA, and it falls within the R SPA is the underlying zoning district. So there isn't a specific zoning district for that. It just falls into the R SPA. So that's what you see kind of in this area here.
So on the on the next map down, the density pods, couldn't you have a density of zero?
Well, in this area, most of the golf course is just in the R SPA zoning district right here. There is a section in here that is zoned. What is that? R SPA residential, single family. And this map is a map that was created from the MDA, the twenty ten MDA, and these density pods that you see outlined through here, this RSF residential, single family, this resort village high density, this medium density up here in Golden Eagle, these roughly reflect what was included in the um twenty ten MDA. Some of these are a little bit bigger actually than what was in the MDA, but these were taken from the MDA. We also have a map that were that is uh that reflects exactly the density pods, which, you know, has some sharper lines in some of these areas up here. We have that map as well. Again, this is just for our internal use so that we can start to understand where density is going and where subdivisions are located on the ground. But this is to respect that MDA. That was the intent of this, so that we can see what was originally um indicated as a density pod.
And and the other thing is that we're relying on the subdivisions which have been approved so that, you know, we're reflecting what was actually approved by the council as opposed, you know, even though the use of that right now of that golf course um within that blue area is open space there, it wasn't designated as that as far as we know on that plat. Um, and so we're just giving it the density that the underlying plats reflect.
And it's also worth noting that he even here in shoreline, this area here, this 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 could change. This is showing some medium density up here, which is phase two and three, which you guys have approved and is built. Of course, we've got shoreline phase one, which is the medium density townhouse right here. This area is generally single family with some resort village high density here, some medium density over here. Pursuant to your more recent discussions with Glenn, he might look to maybe move a few things and change it and work with you guys in town council. And so that could tweak a little bit, but for right now, this is um as close as we could get it to the um to his preliminary subdivision and the MDA density pod.
But I guess that actually is kind of my concern is that if if it's if it's um if it doesn't have a density of zero, someday it may have a density of a lot.
That that's not going to be regulated by this map. You know, it's going to be regulated by um the underlying documents and their original application and all that. So that map again is not an official zoning map. I mean, it is zoned R SPA, and that still applies, but it's not, the density pod map doesn't create or take away density. It's just supposed to be a reflection of what was contemplated in the MDA and what is actually on the ground.
So the all the um all the beige area is that, are all those units um add up to that? I can't remember what the number was, nineteen hundred and whatever um units?
That's right. This area that within the R SPA, they have the the MDA allowance for, I think, what is it right now, nineteen seventy-five? And so they're they're not all built, of course. They're not all entitled, but um this, that is the allowance within this district right here.
So theoretically, I'm sorry, Bruce, um, just continuing with the golf course, theoretically, the hotel could go on the golf course.
We would have to look at a specific application and review it based on the underlying documents. So I can't say without an application what could go there or what couldn't. And what was what was promised with the golf course, I don't know. So I think it's it's not worth, we can't speculate to it. Without an application before us.
Yeah, and I was just going to state, I think it's kind of, everything's in reverse, right? Uh, if we were doing this from the get-go, we would want to be specific about where the density goes and what kind of applications, and we would zone it appropriately. But this R SPA just kind of says, it's just general, and the developer has written um documents that say he can do kind of what he wants in this whole area um with as long as he comes before us and tells us what how he's going to do it, and it it doesn't overstep the overall number. Seems to me that's it's the wrong way, but it's where we're at, and we can't do anything about it. Unfortunately. Is that? Does that make sense?
That's a good summary.
Polly?
Yep, that's accurate.
So um, and I I um, so we don't have a zoning hearing board. So people wouldn't come before a zoning hearing board to um get a variance.
We've we've set up a, I think it was a meeting or two ago. I think we have now worked with the town council to uh create an administrative law judge, just given the size of the community um that would hear variances um uh appeals, uh land use decisions, et cetera. So we do have that structure set into place. Keep in mind, if if, you know, as you look at a zoning map, if there were ever a question or a desire for rezone or changes to zoning, an applicant would submit a uh a zoning uh a rezone request. That would come to the planning commission to you all for recommendation, and then it would go to the town council for um final approval. An ALJ, an administrative law judge, or the Board of Adjustment, Board of Zoning Appeals, call it what you will, they wouldn't see any kind of rezoning like that. Just variances, deviations uh from the zoning uh map or code language specific to a property.
Have we um addressed some of the other comments from the last meeting? I know there was a, there was um.
There was, there were a couple of comments, and I think we've incorporated everything. I think we'll hear from people tonight if we haven't. And so when we open it up to uh the public, uh let's definitely make sure. There is an area. Let me see if I can zoom in here. This, can you see this kind of gray road right here? Can you guys see that?
See a part of it.
I can see it.
Okay, it's kind of right here, comes along here, and then right along the boundary line here. There were some, there was some discussion um at the last meeting that some folks were concerned about the amount of traffic on that road. Did it show as a road? It's actually an access easement um to access utilities and or potentially emergency egress from shoreline down in this area. And so we wanted to note that that where initially showed as a dark uh black road, that it shows as an access easement, and we've noted that in the legend. Now, with that said, I had, I spoke with um Katie Shepley earlier, and I think that we, I thought that this was the road that was being discussed in terms of that construction traffic. I think that we'll hear from uh her tonight, but it may have something to do with a road along here. And I've asked Ryan from TO Engineering to join us to make sure that we are all on the same page, which is an access easement, which is a, which is an actual public right-of-way. I think her concern and maybe Jonathan Guns is along this area. I'm not exactly sure, so I think we'll hear from them tonight. But actually, their hands are up now. So when we go to public hearing, we can, we'll get their input. Did the commissioners have any other questions for me before we open it up?
No, I think you've done a good job there, Thomas, with uh, you know, at least showing it as the general R SPA that overlays everything. Um, I wish we could be more specific, but I understand. So I think you've done the best you can with material you've got.
Thanks.
I agree.
So Thomas, if none of the commissioners have any more questions, let's open it up to public comment. And also for the public comment part, please be advised that your comments will be limited to three minutes. I will let you know when you have twenty seconds left. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman Jonathan Gunn is the first one with his hand up on the top.
Okay.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes, just please state your name, sir.
Yes, my name is Jonathan Gunn and I live at eleven eight eight five Stargazer Circle, which is the road closest to the Jordan L, and I live in the most northernmost house, which is about thirty feet from the edge of the Jordan L. Uh, about an hour and a half before the meeting, I received a copy of the document. And if I could please call your attention to page four, I'd like to ask a question and then be afforded the opportunity to respond. According to this nine sixteen twenty-one map legend, there is a quote road represented by bold black ink coming offshoreline road at the northernmost end of the Deer Waters subdivision, running in a generally southerly direction along the edge of the Jordan L boundary, running southerly towards shoreline subdevelopment. I see that there is now a gray uh pathway that is marked access egress. But that row, or excuse me, that access egress utility easement does not extend north of shoreline, meaning it appears to the to me, to the map copy that I have, and I've blown it up to three hundred percent, that that utility easement does not extend north of the shoreline development into Deer Springs, let alone Deer, where I live in Deer Waters. Right now, as I read the map, and I hope someone will correct me if I'm wrong, there is a bold black line coming offshoreline drive going in a southerly direction uh past the Deer Water subdivision, past Deer Springs, and then down to shoreline. And so my question is this, does this map or is this map intended to reflect this as a quote-unquote road as the legend suggests? Or is the part that comes off of shoreline running southerly past the Deer Waters and past uh southerly towards shoreline, is that also intended to be a utility easement, emergency egress path? Um, because as I read the the map now, it appears to be marked as a road, and I would appreciate the opportunity to follow up to any response.
Jonathan, quick question. Can you see my red outlines? Jonathan, quick question. Can you see my red outlines on here?
Yes, I can.
Is that the area that you're talking about?
Yes, it is.
Okay, let me, Ryan, are you on the town engineer? Are you on?
Let me, Thomas, go ahead, Ryan, if you're on.
I am, and I apologize. I'm, I'm not in a great area of service, so I'll try to be quick. I believe that the part of the problem from Mr. Gunn's recent comments is that we have both the parcels outlined in block and the roads in block. And I think we're confusing the parcel lines with the road lines. I think the intent is that the road would be gray all the way through the red area you highlighted.
Okay, that, then that's a correction we have to make. Okay, I agree with you. I think that that was a mistake on our part, my part.
Well, to, to the extent with that, in reliance upon those responses, then if you could please fix that map to reflect that that utility easement runs along where you have the red line now, I'd be very grateful and I, I think you'll find that there are some other Stargazer residents that will have similar comments, but I won't take up any more time because I think you've addressed my primary concern and I want to thank you first for allowing me to speak and secondarily for, for your future taking care of this.
We'll, we'll, we'll take care of that. And so planning commissioners, what you see here in the red is that will be the full extent of that, that access easement, that gray line. Thanks, Ryan. Mr. Chairman Kathleen Shepley has her hand up, second.
Okay, go ahead Kathleen. Please state your name for the record, please.
It's Kathleen Shepley and I had turned my question over to Jonathan because I thought I had to leave and pick up my daughter, but my ex-husband took them. So Jonathan clarified and asked the question and you've resolved it for me. So Thomas, based on our conversation yesterday and today, as well as your confirmation, I do appreciate as well that this is going to be changed to be an easement instead of a road. So I have no further comment, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Thomas, I sent you a message really quick, if you don't mind looking at that.
Okay. I will do that in one second. And Mr. Chairman Carol Thomas is next in line.
Okay.
And I have to, unshare for just one second to see that. Just give me one second.
Hi, I'm Carol Thomas. I live at one one eight three one Stargazer. And I have a question about the zoning of the Lakeview Estates subdivision. My concern is that everything else is either resort, resort development or mountain. And for some reason, Lakeview Estates is that good yellow box in the middle is, um, RMD, which allows a height unit of forty-two feet or three and a half stories. The mountain height restriction is thirty-five feet above grade. My concern is that there's, I, I already look at Deer Springs and I see those houses are three stories from the highway and my question is could they possibly go three and a half stories on all lots at Lakeview Estates? Based on the zoning?
I will say this, I will, one, go back and confirm that the MDA, that at the time they negotiated this project, they did rezone it residential medium density. So that is reflecting what it currently is. I will confirm that, number one. And number two, I'd have to go back to the MDA and see if there were any specific height restrictions other than the medium density zoning. So I, I, I can do that for you as well.
Okay, so I, I do know
Otherwise, the default would be that they could go to the, the height that you outlined pursuant to the residential median zoning.
So I know the roads are being, the roads are being built out there. Are there proposed model homes or what will be built on individual lots out there?
I, I don't think that there have, there, there's nothing that's been built, obviously, but we are, we will likely get a few initial home designs within, we may have a couple that have already come in for design review. But those probably will come in pretty quickly. So we'll get a sense of what those houses will look like pretty quickly, if we don't already have some maybe in the, uh, i- in the bin right now.
Thomas, who's doing the design review? Is that the great, great overall master HOA?
No, that won't be the master HOA. That'll be the, typically it'll be the two councils and me, the town planner. Two council people and the town planner.
So since the zoning map has not been approved, the final map, is there any way to have that moved back to mountain to conform with ninety, well, others in the resort? Classification at shoreline? Have that conformed to the mountain?
Well, this, again, I'll go
Along three and a half story buildings? I, I, that's just my, why is that little box yellow and everything else is green?
And again, what I would say upfront is that was a negotiation with, for a master development agreement between the developer and the town council a few years back. I will do this. I will, I will go back and look and see if there are any specific height restrictions in there and I will confirm that designation. But otherwise, I would say right now, assuming my read on that MDA is correct, that it would be, it would be medium density and they would have those allowances.
So, so my question is to, to, to the planning commission, is if you gave the developer the promise that
Just be advised, you have twenty seconds left, please.
Okay, that supersedes zoning, is that correct regardless of what zoning and what being? So is that correct?
Say that one more time. Did they give them different?
If the developer was given permission to build the development, it really doesn't matter what the zoning map is approved. Is that correct?
Well, we would look at what's in the MDA and the residential medium density zoning. So we would, I'd have to look and see, I would, I would doubt that the, that the MDA would reflect a greater height allowance. If anything, it might reflect maybe a slightly reduced height allowance or it just said medium density is the allowance.
Okay.
And, and I, I will go back and look at that and I will, I will get that information for you.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time and your efforts.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, the next one is Jared Fields.
Okay, go ahead, Jared. Just please state your name for the record.
Thank you, Jared Fields. I represent the master developer Mustang Development. And I will try to be brief. I've, I've provided extensive written comments and had some exchanges with, with Polly and Thomas. And, and if I can get it without it cutting into my time, one, one quick informational note related to that last comment, Thomas, there was a, I, I was not the applicant, that there was a specific approval of the zoning for that parcel to, uh, I want to say back in like two thousand nineteen. That, that's why you have kind of an isolated pocket that was zoned RMD. It kind of was created as, as its own zone and, and not within the regular residential or regular R SPA RMD. So there's a little bit of history there. I remember
That makes sense to me.
But I don't know why. But I do have some, some brief comments regarding the, the actual map on behalf of Mustang. And, and I do appreciate the work that's been done on this. I do have a concern about the, the noticing that's happened in terms of, of encouraging productive public feedback. This, the noticing for this has been a little confusing in the July twenty-ninth, there was a notice of a planned meeting to, to kind of just ratify a map. And that had one map attached. And there was some feedback provided in advance of that meeting and the day of, of the August ninth meeting, there was a new map that was kind of attached and it was discussed to some extent during the August ninth meeting. And then there was not a separate notice other than just the, the regularly scheduled planning meeting for this meeting. And the, the map that's being shown on the screen right now, I think was just added to the public notice this afternoon. And as far as, the last time I checked, it still actually doesn't show as an attachment or a packet being on one of the town's website. So I, I have communicated to Polly, I have some concerns about the noticing leading up to this meeting, but I don't want to belabor that point. But, but I do think it could be potentially confusing and I'm not certain that everyone who is affected may have, have received the notice. The second item really relates to what I understand is not being presented as a voting item for the, the planning commission. And that's the informational density pod map. And I just want to, for instant purposes, I really just want to let the, the planning commission know that we have a disagreement with the, the town staff regarding whether this is an accurate map. Our, our view is it's not, this was something that was put together not based on anything the developer has submitted. But, but trying to, I guess, fit to certain density categories developments that have been approved. But we've communicated previously that the, the map that was included with the two thousand nineteen general plan and it is available on the county's GIS website is more accurate. I don't think that this map really should be included in the materials because I think it, it raises the possibility of confusion for someone coming back and looking at the record. If they see that the, the zoning map was adopted in the immediate next page is this map, I think that's confusing and I don't think it's accurate. But I have told Polly and Thomas that we will work with them to, to hopefully clarify the records so that the informational map is correct going forward as well as, you know, we, I just want to have the right starting point as we continue to discuss future developments within the area, but, but there are errors in this map that are not consistent with the original MDA. They're not consistent
Sir, you have twenty seconds left.
And then the, the last item that I would want to bring up is that this really doesn't affect MDA property, but it looks like the neighborhood commercial that you have there is just what Mr. Brockbank is proposing to rezone to neighborhood commercial based on what was earlier submitted today, that that's still zoned mountain as far as I know from what I read from the staff report. So that seems incorrect as well.
Are, are you speaking about this area right here?
Yes.
Okay. That, that's an area that we were recommending move to neighborhood commercial, just given its access into the community and it's just an opportunity with some of the small lot configurations there might lend itself to maybe some neighborhood commercial rather than residential, just because it doesn't have terrible, terribly deep lot configurations and it may not be comfortable for residential. And so that was recommended as an opportunity for neighborhood commercial.
And I, I can understand the proposal, but I, I guess if it's being presented as ratification of existing zoning and you adopt this map with that on there, it would seem to kind of shortcut the zoning process for a developer who needs to kind of go through the steps of getting that property rezoned. But so that's another concern, I think, with, with adopting the map as currently presented.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Jared, I look forward to, to, we can talk offline and with Thomas and go through your input on the density part.
Yep, that's helpful. Mr. Chairman, there is one more hand up, Mike Rost.
Okay, Michael, go ahead. Please state your name for the record.
Hello, this is Mike Rost. I am at one one eight six seven Stargazer. I have a, a couple of comments that are related to the earlier discussions. First of all, to, to support the earlier comment made by Jonathan Gunn, you know, I would recommend for driving clarity on this map that the legend be modified, that you do not use the same color for road versus grid line versus whatever. And I would also strongly suggest that you don't use gray and black. If we're trying to drive clarity here, which this should, that we shouldn't, we should have very declarative colors on this. And to Jonathan's earlier comment, I was also confused. The map as currently outlined does indicate that there would be a road, you know, going to the backside of Deer Waters Resort, which obviously it is not because that would be a non-conformant road that obviously the city or the planning council would not support the usage of as a road for thousands of vehicles. Second comment is related to that bright yellow box that the Carol had highlighted. You know, it, just even in this most recent discussion, right? It is, by understanding it, it is, you know, the remit of the planning council to recommend zoning. So by having this yellow, you are recommending, you know, based on, you know, you know, a variance to what's previously been disclosed that this is, you know, a, a medium density area, right? It is, by my understanding, your remit to rezone that if you wish and recommend zoning. So my suggestion, ask would be that you do rezone that to be consistent with the map, that that be a green area and not a yellow area. Those are the conclusion of my comments. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr.
Do we have any other public comment? Hands up, Thomas?
I don't see any other hands up. I don't know if Alicia or Kathleen see anything differently than me in terms of maybe a star six to unmute on the phone, but otherwise I don't see any additional public comment.
I have one last question, if, if I may. The area, just to the left of proposed official zoning map that's yellow, it was green on the last map. Is there a reason why it was changed from green to yellow?
Which area is that, Glenis?
Um, up, 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 up the road, right there, yeah.
Todd Hollow.
So this is
What is that, what is that called?
Deer Mountain Affordable Housing, the former housing, former Todd Hollow. And I think that it was noted as single family, which it really is actually a medium density. So this was to take, take into account and reflect what it is actually on the ground. So that would be a, that would be a change as well. Check something. Well, it's interesting on this map, it looks like in two thousand and sixteen, it looks like it was noted as residential affordable housing, which is really more of a land use than a zoning district, but we would recommend that to better reflect what's on the ground. Would it be single family? It would be medium density. And so that's why that was noted as yellow. But that would be a change, yes.
Okay.
I have a question also. Do we have the authority to rezone that yellow box to, to mountain? Or is that, again, I think Polly had mentioned that that's the, or the original, we're going by the original MDA.
It was originally, go ahead.
No, it was, and that yellow box is outside of the MDA. So that was a separate development.
I think it may have its own MDA, the Lakeview MDA, I think, or when it was annexed, it was annexed as medium density. I will confirm that. That is something that we need to confirm. But I'm trying to remember. I think it was a two thousand and nineteen document that I had reviewed, but I will go back and confirm that.
And, and just to clarify, and Thomas, jump in if I've gotten any of this wrong, but so that box has its own MDA. We will follow up on that to ensure that it was designated that, but that's our belief when it was approved. The other things are, as Thomas pointed out, the area where state lands are has now been designated as open space. That's new. But we think that that is a good idea to reflect it that way. But we think that that is a good idea to reflect it that way. The pink area is land that is going to be donated to the town. So this isn't something that could be developed by, it would, it could only be developed or, it's owned by the town. So the town is going to have control over that area and the idea of having some commercial in the town. And then the last variation is the Deer, the Todd Hollow community, and we designated that, it used to be designated as affordable housing, or at least on those prior general plan maps, which doesn't make sense because that wasn't a zone in the code. And so we've designated that our medium density, residential medium density, because that matches what is on the ground.
So, so do we, back to the, my original question, do we have the authority if that is a Lakeview MDA, a yellow, the yellow box, and we can change it to, to, to reflect more of a unified area there? Do we have that ability?
You know, you have ability to change zoning, but if someone has vested zoning, that vested zoning is going to supersede your zoning map. And so what, we want it, we want the map to be as transparent as possible and reflect what's been vested.
I think that it may have been, you know, it's interesting because you've got Deer Waters, this green triangle and this green triangle, and there's own mountain, but they have a planned performance development overlay on them, there's an agreement for additional allowances in terms of density. In fact, these areas are primarily townhouse areas, more dense than this area, which will be single family units, but on smaller lots, which is part of what the medium density allowed for that the mountain didn't, right? I think that's why it was designated that or agreed upon to at that time of annexation or MDA, Lakeview MDA is what I'm speaking to here. I do want to go back and confirm that, but this is proposed as a single family development. Shoreline is a, is a townhouse multifamily development. Deer Waters is also, I think, this is phase three, I think, going to be townhouse. And this is also a townhouse development. So the, it's somewhat interesting that while this is given medium density, it's actually a single, there are single family units in there.
Right, that, I think that's what's confusing me.
It is a little strange.
Confusing other people who have called in.
Yeah.
It's like, why would you make that the green with the overlay lines on it as well if it has a different?
It, it didn't come through in, I think it was nineteen, twenty nineteen, eighteen, seventeen, something like that. It didn't come through as a PPD, a planned performance development. It was either an annexation or its own MDA. And so I can't give that a PPD overlay just because I don't think that that's technically what it was. It was an agreed upon development pursuant to its own MDA. Um, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I don't know if you're taking any more public comment, but Ms. Tomas has her hand up again. If you are.
No, we'll entertain her question.
Okay, so my question is, is if you rezone that Lakeview Estates, that yellow box, to residential single family, that will allow six units per acre and a height limit of two and a half stories, which I think probably fits in with Mr. Brockbank's plan? Is that something that could potentially consider?
As I said, I, I, I will go back and pull that information and look at that. I, I should also make sure that I explain because maybe this hasn't been understood. That development, that subdivision has already been approved and planned for. The lot sizes and the houses have already been approved. I think there's, if Ryan's still on, he may remember, is it seventy-two? I can't remember the number of houses in there, but that, that has already been approved. So if it was approved and the assumption was that it was medium density, I don't think that we would want to change that to single family density because then we would make every lot in there an existing non-conforming lot. So anytime they needed to add a porch or a deck, they would have to get a variance to do that. And I don't know that we would, I don't think that that would be the intent to, to force them to do that. But again, I will go back and confirm the documentation for that to make sure that it was indeed designated as medium density.
All right, my guess, it doesn't answer my question, but the town's move the direction we're going. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
That being said, then we'll close public comment again on this subject. Do any of the commissioners have any questions?
We're not, we're not making any recommendations on this tonight, correct?
Well, that was going to be my question, we can, but my question to, to Polly is, should we make a, should we take, should we, would we be better suited waiting for Thomas to go back and look at the MDA and clarify the road on the map for everybody's clarity?
I think that's a good idea, I think we should put this over to the next meeting and have him look at that. And also, I think Jared brought up a good point about the commercial. It's, it's kind of maybe a little bit too early to, to zone that commercial at this point unless, I, I don't, I mean, it's, that's confusing to me as well. The neighborhood commercial up there in the Ross Creek area.
And just for clarification on the thinking of that, the council had kind of thought that that had some opportunities with regard to be an entrance to the state park. And so since that land was going to be, is going to be donated, it does offer some opportunities more suited for neighborhood commercial, given its size and slope and configuration than it does for residential, not that the town would probably build residential anyway. And so that was the thinking behind that, because there is so little residential in the community. We had heard at the last, so many people wanted to identify additional neighborhood areas. So that was one kind of a low hanging fruit, if you will.
I, I don't disagree, I'm just not sure if this is the time, you know, if we're, if we're trying to put together a current map, if that's the right move or not. But maybe you can, you know, as part of this postponing to the next meeting, to make a decision on this, we can get more clarification on that.
I can dig a little bit into that, yeah. Yep.
Thomas, correct me if I'm wrong, that area that Bruce was talking about, that's land that's being donated to the town, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
It is, that's right.
All right, so if it's donated to the town, there's really no chance of the town building any kind of housing on there?
Probably not, that's right.
I mean, it's not feasible for the town to do it.
Who donated?
Do that.
Nate.
That's coming from Nate at Deer Springs.
Okay, so then would any of the commissioners like to make a motion in regard to either a positive, negative or tabling this to the next meeting in regard to the zoning map?
I would like to make a motion to table this decision on this, this zoning map till the next meeting.
Could I suggest that you, could I suggest instead of saying that you're going to table it, that you're continuing it to the next meeting?
Continuing discussion, thank you, Polly.
That's right.
So I, I move and make a motion that we, we move the discussion on the proposed official zoning map to the next meeting.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, all right, Ryan, how do, your vote? Okay, Glenis?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Tony's, yes. Okay, that being said, the discuss, this discussion on the zoning map will be continued to the October meetings. And then I believe that's everything that's on the calendar for tonight. If somebody would like to make a motion to end the meeting?
I move we end the meeting.
Thank you. Okay. All in favors, say aye.
Sorry to jump in, I just wanted to just put on the record that you were sent some emails as public comment and that the, the commission has been sent all the emails which the town received.
Okay, thank you, Polly. And then all in favor of the meeting being adjourned, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody, for your time, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye-bye, thank you.